I'd like to call the meeting to order. We are on air. This is the City Council Study Session of Tuesday, November 6, 2018. We have one item on the agenda. Continued discussion regarding the reapportionment of University North Park Tax Increment Finance District Sales Tax Options. And I think we have presentations from our Finance Director and our City Attorney.
Okay, actually, we presented everything at a previous meeting. And you saw the options. And we were just really here to respond to questions that you had about them. Or, I know we've had some individual council members who have asked some questions, but I didn't know that that was presented publicly.
So primarily following this information?
Right.
Everybody have a copy of this?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
These are what happens if we do each of these things?
Yeah, the first question really was, what would be the steps that you would take to terminate the TIF number two? And so those are the bullet points. I think we had put those together actually this past summer. So this is kind of a re-education of what we looked at before. But under the Local Development Act, the project plan is a document of the city. It was enacted by ordinance. It's clearly a legislative act under the statute. So the city may repeal, modify, or amend by its normal legislative process, which we adopt ordinances. So first, second, reading, the tough thing. No ordinances, we talked about this last summer. TIF ordinances can be repealed or modified as long as there's debt outstanding. But that debt has been paid off, I think, in September. So that barrier has been removed. And then once it's terminated or modified, then the county assessor, as far as providing incremental revenues from Avalorum, that would cease. Some of the Avalorum revenues would then flow to the city under the project plan. Question came up about the Statutory Review Committee, whether that is implicated in this process. The section of the statute that deals with that is in Title 62, Section 858, Subpart D. And it says that the governing bodies may... An amendment is considered a minor amendment if such amendment does not change the character or purpose of the plan, does not add more than 5% to the district's area, does not add more than 5% to the public costs of the plan to be financed by apportioned tax revenues. All amendments made pursuant to this provision, this subsection shall be considered on a cumulative basis. So like we talked about last summer, if there was a question about maybe adding project costs, that would be a major amendment. So you'd have to go back to the Statutory Review Committee. It's a gray area. If you're not adding any project costs, there really has been no cases that we're aware of where this has been litigated. It goes back to the language that talks about whether it's changing the character or the purpose of the plan. And so the way Norman has dealt with this in the past, we had a similar question that came up when John Q. Hammons came forward and said, instead of taking the 15 million for the conference center, he would like to forego that 15 million and allow about half of that to go to the Rock Creek Overpass, and the other half was set aside for cultural facilities. We checked with the Center for Economic Development Law back then, whether that was a major or a minor amendment. And it was actually their advice, that since they were not adding any additional cost to the plan, and that the project plan itself had projects that were similar in character, that it was not a major amendment, and that council could have modified the plan back in 2008 without going back to the Statutory TIF Committee. However, council chose not to do that in 2008. And part of their reasoning was, started doing this in partnership with their Avalorum taxing jurisdictions, and they wanted to make sure that they got their feedback. And so they opted to go back to the Statutory Review Committee and get their feedback and got that. And once they got that, then they proceeded to go through amending the project plan ordinance back in 2008.
So let me interrupt you here. I had, before I read through all this again, I had the idea that if we changed the allocation amount, which wouldn't affect how much they're getting, and it wouldn't affect how much they're paying in, it would only change the allocation amount to us. It would lengthen the TIF. But reading through this, I don't see that requires us to go back to the Statutory Review Committee.
The argument would come back to the language of whether that changes the character and purpose of the plan. Because if we reduce the amount of allocation, incremental allocation to the project plan, then that's going to lengthen the time before all of the incremental revenues are accumulated to pay for all the authorized project costs. So that would have a detrimental impact on the Avalorum taxing jurisdictions, because they would be in the project plan longer. They would make additional incremental...
Well, not longer than the 25 years.
No, no, longer than the two and a half years that are currently being projected, that it would take to accumulate all 54.75 million.
And I'm not suggesting that we not do that. I'm just saying that when I read through this, I didn't see that it really stipulated that we do that, but...
So if we opted not to go back to them, and we got an objection, that's probably where the objection would be focused, on whether or not not asking for their advice was a step that would be changing the character and purpose of the plan, that would be in violation of this section of the statute. So my advice would be that you do go back and ask them, just like we did in 2008, just like we did this past spring, when we were considering whether to reallocate 8.75 million back to the senior center. That avoids potential litigation on that issue, and it gives your Avalorum taxing partners an opportunity to weigh in.
Councilmember Wilson.
So I'm just going to preface this with I haven't had any sleep, so, sorry. If we send this to Statutory Review Committee, can they then send back a different proposition to us?
Yes. Yes, we can't restrict what they look at. I mean, it has to be pertinent to this plan, just like we went through with the suggestion about the senior center recommendation. They get to look at all of that, and they get to make their recommendation. Now, the statute protects the city in the sense that whatever recommendation they make, then if council does not want to follow that, then they can override that recommendation with a six vote, supermajority. If they follow the recommendation, it's a simple majority. But the final say is still with the City Council.
Would you talk a little bit about the impact this would have, or, well, I guess this wouldn't have that impact, I was thinking ending it, how that would impact all of these road projects that we haven't had done? If we just reallocate and we keep the money in the TIF, and we're still adding money to the TIF, then we have the money to finish out all the road projects. And there's some other road projects that we've talked about, like on Tecumseh and that flood intersection that aren't on here.
Based on the traffic impact analysis for University North Park, there are some more projects that need to be done. But as far as the amount of money that the TIF is obligated or authorized to pay for transportation projects, you've pretty much met that. There's about $600,000, $700,000 of remaining authorization for road and traffic improvements.
But wasn't there some obligation of the developers?
Yes.
So to get those road projects on Tecumseh and that flood intersection with Tecumseh, the developers would need to pitch in money, right? And we were going to match with federal?
Exactly.
Wasn't that the idea? So where would that money come from?
The way development agreement number one was structured, there was a cap that the city was required to contribute, and it was 11.55 million. Any traffic and roadway costs that were identified in that development agreement that go over that amount would have to be at the expense of the developer. So Anthony is correct. We have just about spent close to the 11.55, if you consider what is already being set aside for the Robinson...
Crossroads.
Crossroads area that's just on the west side of I-35. There's a little bit left, but not a whole lot left. Some of that we might have actually spent when we did the Garver study up there at Tecumseh and 24th.
Isn't there another million in the TIF for the Robinson Street?
Well, I'm accounting for that. When I say there's, we spent about 11.55, less about $600,000 or so. I'm already accounting for the million that we set aside for the Robinson West of I-35.
That's in that 10 million?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Councilmember Castle.
Okay, so just to be clear, no matter what we do, the money for the Robinson Street crossroads intersection is already set aside, earmarked. It's not going anymore.
Unless council took an action to withdraw the previous action of setting it aside, it's in the budget now. If you look at your budget document, you'll see that there's a funded project actually in fiscal year 17 for that.
In the capital project, capital fund?
In the TIF fund.
And so if we shut the whole thing down, so there is no TIF fund anymore, we liquidate it, so to speak, would that money still be in the capital fund? I know it's appropriated.
Yeah, now, when you say liquidate, that's what I am saying when I say, unless council took an action to withdraw your previous action, you have appropriated and allocated that money to that project already.
So where's the money going to come from?
From the TIF fund, from the $10 million, if you will.
So if we, one of the ideas was, shut the thing down, give 75% back to us, 25% back to the Avalorums, do away with all the projects, there's no reason to keep money in there. We're just going to refund everybody their money. But if we went that route, which for the Robinson Street is my worst case scenario, there is no money in the TIF fund anymore.
You would have withdrawn the previous allocation that you did, yes. You could do that.
So part of that is what bank account you're taking it out of?
Yes.
Okay, what Anthony's talking about, it's already appropriated in the fund. So if you kill the TIF and take the $10 million balance and you spend it on something else, then that's still appropriated, but you're going to have to get it out of a different account to pay for it. Or you have to cancel the project.
So all that money went to the, 75%, let's just say $7.5 million, went to the general fund. In the capital, however that breaks out.
The rest went to the capital fund.
Would that money still be set aside for that project, or is it just all in the entire check account?
That would be our recommendation, that if that money flows back partially to the capital fund, partially to the general fund, that we would make sure that based on this adopted budget, that 1.6 million remains set aside for that project, unless council changed their mind and didn't want to do the project. Otherwise, our recommendation is you make sure you set aside that.
That's an action we have to take.
Yes, you'd have to withdraw that appropriation that you've already made.
And re-appropriate it. We don't have to re-appropriate it.
You don't have to re-appropriate it. It's already marked.
But that's my question. If we do, I think, council's concern is, we want to make sure that money is set aside, it doesn't, I'm not speaking for you, but that it doesn't just go into this general, from what we, the TIF slush fund, for what people like to call it, to the general fund slush fund, that now it goes to the senior center sidewalks, animal shelter, whatever. We want to make sure that that money is earmarked for that project to meet that contractual obligation.
Yes.
You don't have to do anything.
You would not have to do anything to make sure that that happens.
So we take an action of council to undo that.
Undo it, that's correct, yeah. That's the best way to think of it.
Okay, we've got two more here, Councilmember Holman and then Councilmember Scott.
Okay, two things, but just following up on that, merely ending the TIF doesn't change that. That's still there unless we decide to spend it on something else.
Correct, you're going to have to take action to get rid of that project.
But just ending the TIF doesn't automatically unravel everything.
I want to make sure that I'm making a distinction in my mind, at least, between ending the tax apportionment and ending the TIF. That's two different things.
Yes.
You can end the tax apportionment, and the authorized projects that you've decided to have in force are still in force until that money gets spent. Or you could reduce the number of projects that you have and just unwind everything. Yes, you could do either thing, but that's, there's two different discussions to be had.
Okay. And the authorized projects in Agreement Number One, I think, those didn't include flood and Tecumseh interchange and all that, did it? Because back then, it probably wasn't thought of?
No, it did include improvements at Tecumseh and 24th and Tecumseh flood.
Okay, so I was thinking just 24th and the West Robinson thing were the only two, but...
West Robinson was included.
Right, right. But I thought...
The Rock Creek Overpass was not included.
Okay. So it says here we've just got almost $500,000 left over remaining authorization on traffic and roadway stuff, and we've met those obligations, or we're about to. I mean, I just want to, like, they're not in my area, but...
Obligations for our contribution level.
Right.
So to follow up, I think what you're headed with this on those Tecumseh and 24th Avenue improvements, if we manage to not get the federal funding, and that project, Sean, is about 4 million, 6 million?
Seven million.
About four and a half.
Four and a half in federal funds, so there's a two and a half match from the city from somewhere. We've got about $600,000 to $800,000 left of TIF funds, but the rest of it, under Development Agreement Number One, is a developer obligation.
As long as there's a TIF.
As long as there's a TIF, as long as we don't back out on our obligation of the agreement.
Okay, so that's one to clarify. So if development agreement is not in place, then that obligation is no longer the developers' and it would become the city's, just like any other road project.
We don't do it at all.
What I would argue on behalf of the city is, we've fulfilled every obligation under Development Agreement Number One of the cities, which was to make available 11.55 million for these defined roadway costs. Now it's your turn to fulfill your obligation. So I would argue, whether there's a TIF or not, under this contractual agreement, you're still bound to cover that cost.
It's a contractual agreement, still in place even if there's no TIF in place. If there's no TIF mechanism, finance...
That particular development agreement, I believe we've met all of the obligations that were required.
So they would still be responsible?
They would have to meet their obligations under that development agreement.
But they would make the argument that our commitment to do that was under Development Agreement Number One. Development Agreement Number One was part of the TIF, there is no TIF, therefore that contract is void.
I would anticipate they would argue that. I think we have the stronger argument. Yeah, it'd be something we'd like to do.
I guess my question is, do development agreements outlast the TIF? Is the TIF more of a financing vehicle as opposed to a contractual obligation?
That is correct.
Good. I just don't want to let them off the hook.
Councilmember Scott.
Put it on us.
I just want to make sure I'm totally clear on the Robinson deal and Tecumseh flood, I guess. I didn't realize this was an authorized project, but so we end the TIF, we end the apportionment, then the project stays. But if we end it all entirely or remove projects, it would take the whole council removing, or the majority of council, removing Robinson.
Correct.
So if we say we want to remove the Lifestyle Center and the Cultural Center out of the agreement, that doesn't change anything?
That's a change to the project plan, and that's the difference, okay? The change to the project plan probably has to go back before the Statutory Review Committee process, has to have public hearings and all of that. It's an ordinance. In order to decide that you're not going to do the Robinson project, that's a city action, that's not a change to the ordinance. Now, council can decide whether you want to do that or not, but the process for those two things is different.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like there's an appetite for losing that project. I think there's also an argument, even under Development Agreement Number One, if you eliminate that project, and that's one of the projects that were originally identified as a traffic and roadway improvement, I would not recommend you go down that path. It doesn't sound like we're going down that path anyway. But I would be real careful about changing any obligation in any of the development agreements.
Okay.
I support your project.
Thank you. So if we do the reallocation...
Please go ahead.
If we do the reallocation, for example, the one that was discussed the most at Finance Committee, the 5%, the option two, that puts a good portion of the TIF money back into the general fund, to the tune of about $300,000 a month, that still has to go to, it still would go before the Oversight Committee, the TIF Oversight, oh, it's already gone before the TIF Oversight Committee.
Yeah, they recommend 25.
They, yeah.
They were talking about all the options, but that was what their recommendation was.
So if we went for that, they'd still have to go back to them for more review?
If council came forward with a specific proposal, yes, the Oversight Committee would have review of that proposal and could make a different recommendation.
Okay, and then it would have to go to the Statutory Committee after that?
Before or after, it could. I mean, you know, it has so happened that usually, because it takes a long time to convene the Statutory Review Committee, it usually goes before.
And Oversight Committee meets on a regular basis. That's what's happened before, okay.
They meet about every month up there.
Yeah, they're scheduled to meet every month.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember Holman.
So what would be the impact if we decide that we want to end the tax apportionment, take it to zero, go ahead and not do the cultural facility or the Lifestyle Center? What's the impact, or what if we just did those three things? And that's effectively ending, that is ending?
That's ending the tax apportionment.
General fund is getting everything, but it would still keep in place?
And the property taxes.
Those other agreements with developer transportation costs, whatever?
Yes, because you would have enough money on hand to do all of the other authorized projects. Now, as we talked about, if you take away the authorization for the Lifestyle Center, there are some contractual obligations related to that, that would have to be renegotiated. And that's not to say don't do it, but just understand there's some strings attached to doing it.
Just more so, more so, the overall feeling is, we don't know exactly what that's going to be, maybe we don't even want to do that anymore. And maybe that property will be more beneficial as being privately developed as something else.
What about, okay.
I don't know, but that's kind of where I, those seem to be the real sticking points, the tax apportionment and those two projects, just go in ahead and, we're not going to do them, cut them out in the entire tax apportionment.
Councilmember Carter and then Wilson.
So I'm just trying to get a grasp on the sequential process that we, and so if I interpret what you've said is, and this, I'm just going to, I guess, state what I am interested in seeing a resolution that I think would be worthy of a vote of council. And I believe that this resolution would want to change the character and the purpose of the plan. So that means what needs to be a resolution, if I'm correct, to direct the Statutory Review Committee to review what we might propose, correct?
Yes.
Okay, well, what I would like to see proposed is have the Statutory Review Committee examine ending the TIF, simply, without getting into the details of that today, because there's obviously a lot of nuances to that. And so I would be, I would welcome their opinion on what that might be. And then, in addition to that, I am personally interested in seeing the property tax apportionment end as well. And I understand that there's a detrimental side effect to the funding of the Norman Public School System. And so to mitigate that damage for the length of time that this agreement was set to run anyway, which is a few more years, correct, Anthony?
We estimate that there would be about two and a half years until there would have been enough...
Depending on sales tax revenue and all the variables. So the same length of time that we would, I got a list of the different recommendations that you could, you know, we could do. I like, and I think there's a lot of support for the idea of funding the SROs at the public school system. And that would offset and maybe even add to that, again, looking at the numbers. And then we could have the Statutory Review Committee come back to us with their proposal for what we're describing here, and then we could vote to accept that, or we could modify it with a two-thirds majority. And I think the citizens of this city would get the opportunity to have council basically have a thumbs up on the TIF, yes or no? And I think that's what our constituents are asking for, and I think that's what they deserve.
Councilmember Clark, I mean, Councilmember Wilson and then Clark.
I think I'm agreeing with everybody, and also I've had no sleep, but I like the way Stephen put it, Councilmember Holman, that, you know, we're hearing that the appetite isn't really there for those big, major projects. I would like to be cautious with, and save, make sure we do what is needed to save the Crossroads Robinson interchange, because I think that is a necessary project. I think that still fits with how a TIF was meant to be used in the greater scheme of TIFs. I don't think the two big projects, I don't think the voters want them. It's been apparent to me that the citizens don't want to pay for that stuff. And I like Dr. Carter's idea of the SRO program, so that the school system has a buffer, even though, you know, it's a two-year. I don't want to pull the rug out from underneath the school system, so that's my very delirious, jet-lagged...
Councilmember Clark.
I also do not want to pull the rug out from underneath Norman Public Schools, but I would be curious to know how much they would actually be netting, if you will, over the next two and a half years? And then if we make a long-term commitment to the SRO program, is that feasible, or should it be just something to help with the two and a half years? So that's something I would like to know, because, you know, we will be getting money back into the general fund, but we're also lacking in a variety of areas and have a whole bunch of positions we're trying to fund, and perhaps a bus system we need to fund now, so throwing that out there. So I'd love to know that. And I would also, when it gets sent back to the Statutory Review Committee, I don't know if, I haven't had a lot of residents give me feedback saying, I don't want those projects. I think it's, no one knows what they are anymore. And I'm to the point where I need to know what your vision is if you want us to continue supporting this. So I would love to get their input on that as well, because if it's just sitting there, I need more than that. I need more than that from my residents. And so I'm all for sending it back to the Statutory Review Committee to talk about reallocating the amount so we can get some immediate relief, which I think no one can argue with the fact that we need, as well as, some, throw me a bone here with these projects. So, but I'd love to know more about, how much are they, they netting Norman Public Schools with the TIF? How much is the SRO program costing us? And if we make the kind of commitment that's been discussed, how will that impact us?
Somewhere between $700,000 and $900,000 a year.
Well, it's less than that as a net, remember that...
The $200,000?
Yeah.
Yeah. Councilmember Holman.
Can Anthony answer her question?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I think everybody wants to know that answer.
I thought she was talking about the Statutory Review Committee, but you want the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And I can't give you a fixed number, because I don't know, but I can give you estimates. Remember that the Norman Public Schools is contributing their property tax money to the TIF. the TIF. And if the property tax apportionment goes away, then they would get that money back instead of contributing it to the TIF. They would also lose some additional money that they're getting from the state equalization formula. So that's why Councilmember Clark is talking about this concept of a net. What is the net loss? And we estimate, and it's just that, it's an estimate, it's a net, but, but somewhere around $250,000, $300,000 is the net amount that they would be worse off if the property tax apportionment went away.
That doesn't sound like the earlier.
That memo, I, remember this memo was written back in the summer, and that's not a net figure, that's a gross figure.
This says 2017, approximately $900,000 to NPS was state aid school formula, that drops to approximately $200,000, that would be a net $700,000.
But again, that doesn't account for the amount of money that they are getting back from what they are apportioning to the TIF.
I don't think I see what you're saying. All right, Councilmember Scott.
Hold on, there was another part to that question.
Oh, and Councilmember Holman had his hand up too.
How much, yeah, the SRO costs?
Yeah, the SRO cost is more than that. This year, the Norman Public Schools is paying about $750,000 for their half of the SRO program. So, yeah, we would want to be clear, the council's direction is, is not to.
To fully fund it, it's to fund the gap.
To fund the gap, that's a good way to put it.
Hey, jet lagged me good.
So that'd be 750, or 750 minus the increment.
Minus the increment, yeah.
So if you're saying that increment's 250?
If the increment is $300,000 and they're paying, we would, we would reduce the amount that they're paying by $300,000, by some method. We could reduce the cost share from 50% to 30% or something like that, again, based on what council's direction is.
It's going to be, $300,000 aren't costing us.
Additional, correct.
Whether we pay it, they pay it, whatever, because we have to pay the officers 100% of the salary.
Correct.
Okay, Councilmember Holman, and then Scott.
I'd be okay on a temporary basis doing that, but I have always had reservations about the SROs. Ours have been very good, it's worked out really good, our officers are really great, and the kids love them. But it hasn't been great nationwide where police are in schools. And I don't really like the idea of the city completely paying for public school system security force.
Yeah, now, my understanding is that the council's direction would be just for the gap period, for the, for the time that, the two and a half or so years from the time that the TIF would have been fully funded, if we didn't make any change to the apportionment calculations, is that right?
That's what I.
And this would have to come out of general fund, because the PSSD obviously doesn't have any room to pick that up.
Well, whether we like the SRO program or not, it was voted on by the voters.
Right, I agree. But voters also voted on it under the premise that NPS was paying for half of it.
Yeah, where you go.
So, and it's their, it's their system, I want them to have, you know, their, as much control over that as possible, since the officers are in their schools, things like that. So I wouldn't want the city to be taken over or anything like that, but on a temporary basis, I would definitely support it paying for it.
Do you still have one? And then Councilmember Bierman.
Can you tell me just a little bit about the bid, the business improvement district and within the TIF as part of the development agreement?
Sure, that, that's one that we would recommend, that we would make sure we honor, that particular provision in the development agreement. What, what that came out of in Development Agreement Number Three, there was an idea of funding an endowment that would be used to maintain legacy park once it was, once it was built. And the city was going to contribute to $900,000 to that endowment, and then the developer was supposed to contribute a matching amount. As that progressed, the endowment idea using TIF increment money came a little bit under concern whether that was a valid expenditure or not. And so in Development Agreement Number Five, we came up with the idea of leveraging that $900,000 by setting up the Business Improvement District, where the businesses through self-assessment would pay a portion into that maintenance fund. And the maintenance fund then was set up for a 10-year time period, $200,000 a year, so a total of $2 million that would be going into that maintenance fund. The city, using their $900,000, was paying $200,000 the first year, and the bid district paid zero. That gave additional time for additional businesses to actually open up in the district that would lessen the cost on any one district. Then the very next year, the city's contribution was reduced by $25,000, so we were doing 175. And then the $25,000 then was assessed to the businesses within the district. And then the next year, we kept reducing, $25,000, $25,000, $25,000. And they would increase by 25, 25. And so we're at the point now, I think, Anthony, correct me if I'm wrong, I think our contribution this fiscal year is 75,000?
Yes.
And 25,000 is being assessed to the businesses.
And that's ongoing to maintain.
And it continued to, to lower, so next fiscal year, we'll pay 50, and they'll, we'll assess 175, then the next fiscal year, we'll pay 25, actually, I said that backwards.
I gotcha.
And then the last two years, they pay 100, they assess 200 each year.
Okay.
Just to round that out.
Does the bid just continue after that?
Bids are normally 10 years under statute, so once that timeframe runs, we anticipate in the ninth year, going back to that, the board that's been set up out there, and ask them, how's this working out for you guys? Is this working okay? Do you want to continue? And hopefully, they'll say, yeah, yeah, there's, there's value to us as businesses to have that park maintained adequately, and there's been enough development in the area that it's not a burden on any one business, that's the idea. And so they would come back and say, let's go another 10 years.
Great.
But that would be something they would, again, come back and petition council about, and the council would have to adopt an ordinance that would create that next bid district. Hopefully, it would be no contribution by the city, because they'll have, they'll have had two years of the $200,000 assessment. And then whatever assessment those businesses felt like would be appropriate to maintain the park in the way that benefited their businesses. Now, whether that would be 200, whether it be 150, whether it be 250, we'll know closer in time when it gets closer to that time to make that decision, but that's the concept.
Okay, Councilmember Bierman and then Holman.
So I, I am definitely keen on putting together a resolution to the Statutory Review Committee to, I guess, in essence, end the TIF while maintaining commitments like, like the Robinson and Crossroads project. One reason for that is, you know, we talk, we talk a lot about Norman Public Schools, the impact this would have on them, but bringing our sales tax apportionment down to zero still has an impact on the other taxing jurisdictions that are losing property tax money to the TIF. And so I would much rather see it ended. I am somewhat agnostic as to how we replace that money to Norman Public Schools, whether it's the SRO program or waiving their contribution to a stormwater utility, whatever, you know, whatever we, whatever we come up with. I, I'm also not entirely thrilled with SRO programs as a concept, although I agree with Councilmember Holman that it's worked out fairly well for Norman. I certainly wouldn't oppose that being the way we do it, if that's, if that's the will of council. But I, I'm certainly willing to consider other, other methods. But I do, I am concerned about just bringing our sales tax apportionment down to zero and in effect extending the life of the TIF even further, especially because of the impact on the other taxing jurisdictions. So I'd like to see what the Statutory Review Committee says about that kind of a proposal, and then we can kind of go from there. I mean, they have certainly proven themselves more than capable of coming up with creative alternatives to what we send to them. So I, I am hesitant to kind of develop too much of a plan right now, because they certainly have their own minds, so. But I would like to, I would like to move forward with, with ending it as opposed to simply extending its life by reducing the sales tax increment.
I'm lost where I am. Yes, Councilmember, I think Clark, yeah, or Carter, I think you came before, he came before you before.
What?
He came before you, I called on him before, I called on you.
Go ahead. I'd agree, I would like to see us just in, in the sales tax apportionment, of course, but I would like to know what, what do the other taxing jurisdictions think about? Do they want us there or not? I assume they wouldn't, if we're not in it, it's going to, puts more of a burden on them, of course. But I definitely would support us getting our, ours out for sure. The park issue, if the, if the bid isn't continued, the maintenance of legacy park just gets pulled into the Parks and Rec budget?
It'd be a city park, so it'd be city responsibility.
Okay, so, okay, yeah, thanks.
Councilmember Carter.
Okay, I think I, I think I know the answers to these questions, but I'm going to ask you for the benefit of the public. Well, first, first of all, just a statement that in, in my random conversations with school board people, I think what they're really craving is some planning time, you know? So I think to, I, I agree with Stephen on the whole SRO philosophy thing. And so I'm kind of with Kate, you know, not married to this whole idea, but if that seems like what the public schools desire, you know, as long as we give them an exit strategy, I think that's what we're trying to accomplish there. And then when we end the property tax apportionment, or property tax, the, the, can you, can you tell me, for the, remind me of the other taxing jurisdictions that, that are part of that?
It's, um, the library, the health department, the county, the more Norman Tech Center.
Yeah, and so just like Councilman Bierman said, if that ends, that apportionment ends, they're going to see an increased revenue, correct?
Yes.
Each one of those areas?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Castleberry.
As long as, I don't care whether we get the TIF or not, as long as, these are the kind of things that I want to see, that Robinson Street, Crossroads is protected, and that the school dis, and the, the school district is made whole. Now, I've got some concerns there. How would we do that legally? Now, the SRO program was, when the PSSD Two, it was a vote of the people, it was not council action, it was a vote of the people to have an SRO program. I don't think we can do away with it. And it was a cost sharing deal. And prior to that vote, it was pretty clear that it was a 50-50 cost sharing deal. That's what we told everybody, that's what people voted on, not a, well, we're going to cost share 99%, 1%. So I want to get comfortable with the fact that our cost sharing still does that. If that is a half a million dollars net, does the PSSD have that money? I think you've said we don't. So that means the general fund would have to supplement that.
That's correct.
Okay. So how, and we would only do that for like three years?
That's what I hear.
I'm going to round it off to three years, minus two and a half, but I'm going to round it off three years just to make it, hopefully, we'll go three years, so that'll give us a chance if our sales tax was down, and the, and the increment was down too.
That's what I hear the discussion to be.
Okay. How do we get, I mean, we could pay for the SRO programs, but how do we get the rest of money? We talked about, well, we'll give them credits on stormwater. I think Stormwater Committee and I think council's been pretty clear that we're not giving credits to anybody. We give credits to Norman Public Schools, are we going to give credits to more Norman Technology? Are we going to give it to OU? Are we going to give it to all sites or any other school around? I think that's such a, we got, I want to get comfortable with how.
I did not hear a consensus of council about that, I just heard that.
Well, there's an idea thrown out there, but I mean, if we go that.
And just understand that, that Councilmember Castleberry is right, that you, you have to take off your council member hat there and put on your sewer water and sanitation utility trustee hat. And, and you don't want to give away customers, because now you're, you know.
PSST is one of the biggest contributors to the stormwater problem, I'd say, I don't, I think, yeah.
Yeah, so that would also, that would come out of the utility fund, not the general fund. Right, I mean, if we give credit, that'd be less money they'd be paying.
Yeah, and I don't think that's something you would want to do as trustees of the utility authority. Now, the general fund could pay the bills for those customers, you know, but, but just understand that that places additional burden on the general fund. Of the, of the alternative ways of making the school district whole that have been talked about, I think the, the covering the cost of the SRO program is the best way to do it.
But does that get us, then my question would be, does that get us there?
Yes, because again, the school district is paying a lot more than the net of the cost that they would.
That's, that's my only concern, is that as long as we make them whole, that we don't hurt the school system. And I realize we're taking money away, but they're also getting money, so that's why we got to get more comfortable with that, with what that net is. And if we can cover that net through fully, through the SRO program.
Through a different cost share.
A different cost share, not 100% on us, then I think we're still being consistent with that ballot language of, of cost share, so with that, so I'm, I'm fine with kind of exploring that.
Councilmember Carter.
Mr. Bryant, was the 50-50 cost share, do you recall, part of the ballot language that the people voted on?
No, it's not in the ballot language, the ballot language just says cost share, but that certainly was the discussion and the material. So from a legal perspective, probably not enforceable, but certainly from a good faith to the voters, what did we tell them when we asked them to vote for it? I would be very cautious about backing up on that.
And what has the cost share been so far?
It's been 50-50. That's the way we negotiated the MOUs, that's the way it's been from here to here.
That's salaries only, right?
Salaries only, we, we've talked about vehicles, but we haven't, we haven't gotten an agreement on that. So we're funding the vehicles, but salaries only is 50-50.
That's not.
So one other, one other question then, in asking you to have a resolution for us to review and vote on, is that possible by the next meeting?
Sure, especially the way you've talked about it, where it's a little bit more general that would say, here's our ideas, we want you guys as the Statutory Review Committee to sort through that and bring us a recommendation. They may or may not agree with it, but we want you guys to take the first whack at it, that's what I'm understanding you saying.
I would, I would be interested in seeing that this, the next meeting if possible, but thank you for doing that.
We're doing our best.
So on the SRO program, we're still four short, as far as being fully, as far as four officers short, as far as being fully. So I would like to take that into consideration, is we're, we're supposed to be, the SROs, according to ballot language, the patient plan, they're already supposed to be there. But we're, we have it because we can't afford it, they can't afford it. And so wherever, whatever that adjusted timetable is, I think we need to look what those costs are and take that into our consideration.
Yeah, and, and you're correct, and just understand that that increases their cost as well, and, and where their cost share of, instead of it being 50%, let's say it was 25%, their cost share of 25% just went up. So, yeah, that would have to be considered as well.
Okay, then my follow-up is, legal obligations, we've got this 8.25 million sitting out there for the Lifestyle Center.
Okay.
Whether we want it or not, we've got a contractual obligation that if the developer comes to us with a Lifestyle Center that meets the criteria of Lifestyle Center, I know that we have to consider it. We don't necessarily have to do it, but we have to consider it. But I would think if they brought forward a proposal and meet all, all of our requirements, it would be pretty hard for us to, kind of arbitrary, precious for us to not do it. So if that came through, we would still be on hook for that 8.25 million, right? We just wouldn't have it set aside in the TIF, we'd have to find another source, the general fund, capital fund, bond, wire it, or?
Yeah, it'd be a contractual obligation, so whether it came out of a, and again, the TIF is just a revenue.
It's a funding.
It's just a funding source, so whether it came out of that funding source or some other funding source, if it's an obligation, then, you know, we would have to figure out how to do it. how to do it.
So they're.
Or, or just, or litigate it with them.
Right. So the reverse side of that is, what about the clawback? We get to 2023, they don't do the Lifestyle Center. And we come in and say, hey, you guys didn't do what you're supposed to do. We want our money back. And they would say, eh, you guys entered the agreement. So we're not, or would, or would, or there's agreement still in place? And that we would still have a good claim that they would have to pay it back.
Yeah. I would recommend that we take the position that the agreements are still in place. And so as long as we meet our obligations under the agreement, that they would need to meet their obligations under the agreement. So even if we decide we don't want to utilize the TIF funding source, if we're, stick to our obligation that if they meet those requirements within that timeframe, then we will make available to them what we said we would make available under the agreement from whatever source, then I think we're okay. If, you know, if they don't perform their obligations under the agreement, then they have a, an obligation to reimburse us the cost of the frontage road extension and the construction cost up to 5.9 million of legacy parks.
Now, is that an automatic deal or would it take an action of council to enforce that clawback?
Well, I would hope we could call them and they'd send us a check.
Well, they're not going to. I mean, probably. It's going to be, it's going to be litigated. I mean, it's going to be litigated or negotiated or something. They're not going to, nobody's going to voluntarily do that.
So the answer is, it is conceivable that they can come back on us for $8 million, even if the TIF has ended.
Yeah. The current agreement requires us to make that available through the certain timeframe. And that also requires them to perform at a certain level within the, within the same timeframe or to pay us back the penalty.
Which is a risk we take.
Okay. Councilmember Wilson.
Okay. What was the timeframe on that?
I think it's 2023 unless the design is walkable and then it can be extended another three years to 2026.
We get to decide what that is.
We decide what.
We decide if it's walkable?
Yes.
Okay. It seems like there's a lot of gray area too, as to what that Lifestyle Center, there's like no parameters. Am I correct?
There's some performance criteria that, that remember we raised when we did the development agreement. When we started, it was, what, $175 a square foot at a certain level. But then I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't bring it with me. But when we did the amendment to development agreement number five, that raised that pretty significantly to, I think, $300 and $400, depending on the size of the, per square foot, depending on the size of the retail outlet.
So it had more to do.
Councilmember Carter had his hand up first.
Is it true that if we end the TIF now and our contractual agreement stands in place and in 2023, they miraculously decide to build a Lifestyle Center and we need to come up with 8.25 million, we could literally just create a new TIF at that time to fund it?
Good question.
Well, you, somebody's already answered that at a previous meeting because I wrote it down, that, that we could do that, you know, so.
But we already, they already have a agreement.
If there was no development on that, if it was undeveloped land, it's a lot easier because your, your base, you know, was set a lot lower. I mean, that's the way the TIFs work. You have to have the base first. And then from the, the date that you create the TIF, it's any additional increase and have a warm tax or some tax if you use that above what that base is. And so right now, the base is set at what it was in 2006, which was very, very low. So the risk that you have there is if you stop it at this point and later come back and try to recreate it, your base might be significantly higher. And so the increment would be generated at suit, significantly a lower rate. But yes, it could be done. But you'd have to look through those things and make sure it makes sense to do that.
Councilmember Castleberry.
So on the, on the Lifestyle Center, it's more financially performance based than it is it looks like this. As opposed, the 2020, I understand the walkability part of it is. But the criteria for that incentive is you will produce stores that generate this much sales per square foot or sales tax. I mean, that was the idea. We're trying to generate a lot of sales tax. It needs to be something. So it's more performance based than it is as far as what it looks like.
Yeah. There, there are two pieces to it. You know, one was, we would refer to it as the carrot and the stake approach. You know, one part, the, the incentives were really based more on a store that's not already in Norman. There was a certain range that it had to come from. And then, then the performance criteria, $300 or $400 a square foot, depending on the size of the store. So you'd have to meet that criteria to be able to be eligible for the incentive. The stick part was that you have to at least have at least 250,000 square feet in the Lifestyle Center area built out within those particular timeframes. I have to go back and look. I'm not sure those were tied to those performance levels. I think it was just a shell completion of retail space in that area.
So they just, double shell then?
So they could go and build something that, that would meet that criteria of retail shell space. I think we nibbled away on that a little bit. I'll have to go back and look on development agreement number five and the amendment to try to strengthen that criteria a little bit, even for the, even for the penalty provision.
Councilmember Wilson.
Is it fair to say though, that this is a pretty, I think a safe gamble in my opinion, with the shift in, in shopping structures and the way that people are doing things? Big box, there's just not probably going to be this holy grail of Lifestyle Center the way it might have been envisioned in 2008 or whatever we did this, that it, that they would, I mean, it's kind of like a unicorn, I think, that we're hunting for this Lifestyle Center, that we're probably going to be safe. And with the, my, I had completely forgotten the fact that if we have, we get pinched for 8.5 million dollars or whatever it is, that we have some options at that point between now and 2023 that we could get creative and fund it. This unicorn actually appears. Everybody agrees. Our constituents seem to also want to participate in this. That I, I, I just feel safe doing it. I don't think it's, of course, I'm going on record to say that, so.
Councilmember Castleberry.
Okay. So it's, it's follow-up with that. If we're making an $8 million bet that this unicorn's not going to happen. And the other side of that is if this doesn't happen, we get, we'll get $8 million back in the clawback.
Two different criterias because the, two different approaches.
Right.
So let's focus a little bit on that clawback. Okay. So it had to be 250,000 square feet of retail space to shell completion within the Lifestyle Center area. When council approved a development agreement number, one of them, okay, that's when the crest was coming online. Council made a decision that they were going to give them credit for that crest square footage against the penalty, not, not for the incentive part, but just against the penalty. So that crest ended up being about 106,000 square feet. I think it was estimated 109 when we did the agreement, but the actual build out ended up being around 106. So 250 minus 106, that's what's left, about 144,000 square feet that they have to build of retail space within the Lifestyle area to shell completion by 2026. There was some discussion when we were doing the amendment to development agreement number five, when we were ratcheting up the performance criteria a little bit. There was some discussion that they, that the developers felt like they could probably come in and go ahead and build that square footage, 140, 144,000 square feet of retail space to shell completion, because to avoid the penalty, they're not required to fill it, they're just required to build it. And so they were weighing out themselves, what would be the cost of building that versus the cost of what the penalty might be. So I'm only saying that because I think realistically, I think if it gets right down there to the, almost to ring the bell and say it's time to pay, don't be surprised if they don't go out there and build 144,000 square feet of retail space to shell completion. So they don't have to pay that. It's, it's a, it's just a business decision.
That was the reason we, that's the reason that we held our nose and voted on it the last time. And that's the truth. I mean, I don't think any of us were really hot to extend that.
Property tax, unless you had the tenth, it would get in. Well, we don't get property tax anyway.
We get half.
Or, well.
Right now.
The Alborums would get, would benefit from that.
The Alborums.
Councilmember Bierman.
So I have two questions. One hopefully is a quick one. We have, we being council as a body, not us individually, voted to extend that deadline for the clawback and the incentives. If we can move that deadline out, can we move it back?
Sure. Anything's negotiable with them. I mean, it takes two sides to agree.
They have to agree to it.
But you know, one, one reason that we got to that point of extending it through the negotiation process is kind of what we're talking about here. Do, do we really want them just to go build 144,000 square feet of retail space at shell completion that you have empty projects out there?
It looks like a double.
Yeah, we'll get some property tax. But you know, it's not really what we were trying to accomplish with the project plan, which is we're trying to accomplish, trying to have some unique retailers that would end up being more of a draw to our community so that we'd have shoppers in our community that would generate sales tax from us. And that, that was very specific to the question about not hurting existing retailers. That we wanted newer things, things that were unique, things that weren't already in Norman, so that there would be some balancing and not hurting our existing retailers, which is also what the, you know, the, the transfer adjustment provision was about, to make sure we don't hurt existing retailers, which is also what the average annualized growth rate provision was about, is to make sure we maintained that four and a half percent growth rate over the period of the TIF so that we're not cannibalizing our existing businesses. So there were protections in there. But again, when we were negotiating this last agreement, extended the deadline, it was the choice, do we push the developer into this building retail space as a shell completion? Or do we take a breath and say, how can we work together to try to achieve what we're trying to achieve in the project plan? And we may be to a point where we just don't think we can achieve it, which is kind of what we're hearing here. And that sounds like what you're hearing from your constituents.
Well, and that's part of my concern is that, you know, we might still end up coming to 2023 and they're still going to do just that. They're just going to build the building.
But at 2023, do we have the opportunity just to say, that's it?
Right. But they could come in at the last minute and still just build a husk of a building to collect, to collect, to avoid the penalty at minimum.
The carrot part, but they, they could probably avoid the penalty part. You're right.
So, you know, that's my concern with that.
In 2023?
Yes.
Yeah.
But if we do nothing, the TIF's already done. It's already fully funded by 2023.
Before that.
If we, if we did nothing.
Right.
The TIF would be fully funded in two and a half years.
Right.
So that's 21, 22. The TIF would be fully funded. It'd be done. I mean, we still had.
We would have all the money in the bank to cover all of those project costs. Still hanging out there would be the penalty rebate because, you know, they have till 2023. Although I thought it was 2026. I'll double check that time.
Well, it's 2023 unless it's walkable and we decide whether or not it's walkable.
And it's not.
Sounds like the only thing we get to decide on in terms of.
Is that on the three or the other one? I, I think that I have heard the consensus in here about taking the, doing a resolution and going to the statutory committee. I am still not convinced that ending it right now is the best thing to do. I think financially the city would be better off if we did the reallocation and then looked at ending it in the next few years or letting it run out because of some of these complications and, and roadblocks and because I think we could get the money into the general fund faster. So.
So we're talking about reallocation or totally?
No, they're talking about totally ending it. That, that's what I've heard, totally ending it. So what we're going to take to the statutory review committee is, and I, and I agree with taking it to the statutory review committee. I agree that if it does end, we need to do something for the school system. I agree with all of that. I just don't know that this is the wisest thing long-term from the city, especially knowing that there are some things in the works right now that could make a difference and make the, the TIF even better. So yes, Councilmember Castleberry.
We'd like to ask Anthony to kind of come up with a plan for us on the best way to make the school system whole, keeping in mind that we have annual budgets and that the next council can say, the heck with that, we're not going to make the school system whole. And we want that money in the general fund. So if there's some way we can make this a three-year commitment.
Yeah. So again, I want to make sure that that's the direction from council is that it is just that interim period between ending the TIF now and when it would have naturally ended.
I would say maybe just round it off three years to make it easy calculation and sales tax being down, you know.
And the, and the second thing I want to be clear on is, is if you're giving direction to the statutory review committee about how the TIF is ended, if it is, if it is by reducing projects to the amount that we have enough money on hand to, to, to fund the remaining projects, or if it is just end all the projects, because that's a.
One of, one of the concerns is if you take out, and, and if you take out the cultural center and you take out the Lifestyle Center, which is the part that bothers me the most, is the Lifestyle Center and the contractual agreements surrounding that. That really worries me. If you take those out, do we actually have enough money to do all those other fundings? The 1.5 million dollars for the art, do we have that money? Do we have the money? We have the money for the Robinson Street? That's a million dollars. Do, within the money we have right now, do we have enough money to do all that? I don't, I don't think we do.
It's pretty close.
Well, it's close. Yeah, we'd be close.
Yeah. I think the chart Anthony gave.
There's the answer right there.
If you had a chance to look at this, is, is pretty good, really. I mean, it does kind of line out there a little bit. And also we had that on point four here.
Yeah.
That we've got about 25 million of project costs. We've got a little over, almost 11 million, 10.7 million in cash. So we've got about 14.342 to accrue if we did all of the projects. Okay. So if you cut out either 8.25 or 8.75, then you will have enough to accrue to do everything else except for the Lifestyle Center and the cultural facility, if that's what you're cutting. Also, what was good, what Anthony showed here is, and this was rounded because it all depends on how sales tax come in and this, so forth. But it's about 4 million a year of sales tax that's coming in now, and about 2 million a year of property tax. So that's kind of the ratio. So I'm, I think it's, I think you're smart with your suggestion about sending this to the Alborum Committee to let them wrestle with this themselves a little bit, because the school may have a, a better idea than what we can think of about what is the best way to protect them. And I, I would like to hear that. I mean, it's their budget they're working with. It's, it's their cost. So I think that'd be real helpful to hear that. And then you guys get the final say. So that's a good one.
Okay. So we're clear on what needs to be done next. All right. Me to get your.